And is simply an obstructionist getting in the way of the town's progress. The planning board has no discretionary power. Its assessments are limited to and based on voter approved ordinances, regulations and state law. There will be no planning board deliberation today and no decision will be made today. The planning board deliberation period may begin after the public hearings have been closed. And the these deliberations will take place in public. This application will either be approved, approved with conditions or denied by January seventeenth. This date is sixty five days following the acceptance of the application as complete. Which took place at the last planning board's meeting on November thirteenth. The purpose of this hearing is to listen to the public. We look forward to an orderly and informative morning. Are there any butters here today who would like to go first?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm the select board ex officio and I'd like to recuse myself when you see the.
Yes, I will do a roll call.
Okay.
Let us begin.
Rob Wilson, member.
Mike Copel, member.
Needs United alternate.
Bill Spence, member.
Catherine Brennan, member.
Rich Rita, select board ex officio. I will now recuse myself since the town is in a butter. Due to the fact that there are easements in play with regard to the ice arena maintenance, parking, ice storage, drainage and access.
Now, Margaret.
Margaret Turner, alternate.
And would you, well, you're an alternate. Would you accept being seated today? Thank you.
John Patikella.
Oh, another, of course, how could I forget you, Kelly? So we have.
We need four for a quorum.
Well, four, we have a quorum. We're not deciding today. We're hearing the public. So there's not going to be any votes.
You're seated for whom?
You're being seated for Rich Rita.
No, you can't.
Oh, I can't, I can't. That's right.
It's better for Morgan.
How about you replace Morgan? That's good. Okay, I think we're ready to rock and roll.
One, two, three, four, five. We have room for one more.
Well, I.
You only need four for a quorum.
I know that. But it doesn't matter.
Okay, that's fine.
It doesn't matter because we're not voting, we're not deciding, we're listening to the public.
Okay.
And we're very much like to hear what the public has to say. And I may ask you, Chairman, to assist me with the reading of these other letters. Who would like to speak first? I see a hand.
I'll go first.
Don't scoop those things.
So my name is David LaPieve. I'm an attorney in my office in Concord and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen are butters. And.
You're not a resident, you're here as a representative.
Yes, correct.
Please go ahead.
Council of the Board of Selectmen. Though I understand you're not going to. Am I correct in understanding you're not going to have the applicant answer questions? The, as the selectmen have four easements on this property. And the revised plans, there's a note on the plan that makes reference to the easements. And there's actually a parking area easement that is shown on the plan designated as a parking easement. But the question we have, and I was hoping to get an answer today, but if we can't, that's fine. Is there are three other easements? There's access easement, there's a drainage easement, and then there's this easement for ice and storage for the Zamboni. And quite frankly, looking at the plan, it wasn't clear to me where the that area was delineated. And the dimensions of that area wasn't, aren't clear to me. So. Either the applicant can follow up with me and give me that clarity outside of the meeting. Or the, you know, someone can point to the plan and answer those questions if it's there. That was my first area of comment was to kind of do some fact finding from the applicant, but if we're not going to do that, we're not going to do that.
No, I will ask the applicant to answer your question.
Okay, okay.
What I'm trying to do is give the public the chance to speak on this matter and. I want to hear what the public has to say. It's a public hearing. So I didn't want to turn it into a debate between you and the applicant.
Oh, I don't want to debate anybody. I didn't come for debate. I mean, I'm available to debate.
I understand all of that.
And the second point, a comment I'll make on behalf of the Board of Selectmen has to do more with the. The parking issue in general, and I understand that we're maybe waiting to talk about that. But the E, what we're calling the east side parking area. Which is the shared parking area that the town has an easement to use. What I noted from looking at the. The data that was submitted by the applicant is on, it was like five or six days. That on one of those days, it was at a hundred percent capacity and on like the remainder of the days, it was at like ninety percent capacity. So, I mean, that tells me that that east side parking area is not an area that is available. For parking for this new use. And so I'm making that comment because parking obviously is going to be a big issue. And I know it's a shared parking area. But it appears to be fully shared right now. So I hope the board takes that into consideration when you deliberate.
Thank you. I will ask a represent to answer the question later on after the public hearing is. Is that all right with you? Good, okay. May I hear from someone else, please? This is John Russin, member of the planning board.
Tim Smith, representing Town Square, WBSR, the butter. Obviously, we are in strong support of the of the athletic or the adventure center. As we believe it will bring more activity into the core of our town, which is much needed to create a fruitful, busy. Environment for our guests. It will help us with our lodging occupancies. It'll also help us with fulfilling the desires of our. Our guests that are here year round, not just in the summer. One of the big things that I'm excited about is moving the adventure center out of the center of Town Square and moving it out into a location where it's not noticeable. So our guests will be able to see as they come into town, where they go for the center of activity. Finding out all the great amenities, not just the amenities that we're adding, but also the amenities that we already possess. And having a central hub to find out all the information that our town has. And give us the chance to be able to centralize that, that hub of activity. As we all know, the town was developed in the idea of a hub and spokes. And making sure that we have a strong center core to our town. And what we're lacking right now is that strong center cores, you can see right on the development plan on your left. That, that activity center we know is going to be the. The center of where everyone comes to first participate in what amenities we have. Allowing them to spread out from there. We know that in our desires to fill out our our center hub of our town. We need to be able to increase that activity. And this will allow us to increase that activity and make sure that it is well coordinated and choreographed for our guests to be able to. To build advantage of what we offer here. This is the start of trying to get off the ground for revitalizing our town core. And we feel strongly as a resort that this is really going to help us. Add more activity, add more amenity, add a better guest experience. So we feel strongly as a resort that we are fully capable and. And ready to take over the responsibility of operating this facility and look forward to bringing this to fruition for not only the guests, but also for our residents. The Nordic Center right now, we know is quite small and it feels quite cramped when you're in there. We have such a great Nordic system in the wintertime. That we really want to have someplace that the Nordic Center can call home and have a little, and have a much better experience for our Nordic guests. With the center story of this adventure center being really concentrated on leisure and making that experience much better, giving them that indoor experience. It's going to be a much better experience for them to enjoy those, the Nordic offerings of bike offerings. Things that will center out of that, out of that facility. And also, we have had problems over time with having biking throughout town, as we all witness on a. Any Friday or Saturday during the middle of the summer. Having the adventure center over in an area where they can easily get out of bike shop on that lower floor. Will allow them to get out to the trails much simpler. And it'll make a more, a better communication path for us when they are taking the bikes out. As it will be a much calmer environment for them to leave Town Square in. Hopefully this all will add to our experience here in town and I don't see anything here that will subtract from our experience. I think it's just enhancement and it's going to make a much better experience overall for both residents and guests throughout the valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Another member of the public who wishes to make a comment concerning this adventure zone.
Mike Farber, Twenty River Road. The last set of hearings, it focused all around the parking study. There was, I sent an email, never got a response to the email of. You know, it was talked about my bill, went to non-public, never brought up again. Motion made by Kathy, went to non-public, motion got rescinded. And then on the eleventh hour. All of a sudden, the parking study became the issue that was asked for extension. Now that the applicant has redone their application, doesn't include a parking study. And if it does, what are the results?
The answer is there is a parking study. A parking study has been submitted. It is part of the application. I think it's on the site. It's on the town's website.
I couldn't find anything about the new application on the town's website.
With regard to the parking?
I couldn't find anything.
Anything? Alyssa, is it there?
Um, yep. So. Parking study came later, so it wasn't with the original, you know, but it's not there now.
And to, well. We're here to listen to the public, but to answer Mike's question a little further. There's also a peer review underway. Where a another parking expert has been asked to review. The parking study that has been submitted by the applicant. And this is going to be debated in public and reviewed in public. The parking is obviously a very important subject and it will be dealt with in public. To the fullest extent. That satisfy your question?
Yeah, now I'm going to go look for the parking study.
Yes.
It's not, it's not that obvious.
On the public, right there, right in the middle.
So that's his little link and this was just public notice, okay?
That maybe that changed while I was.
Yeah, I don't see it there either.
It should be there.
It's not.
Okay, further answer your question, repairs will be made. And it will become, it will become perfectly obvious that there is a parking study, part of the application. Further public comment? We'd love to hear from you. We want to know what the public thinks. You had your hand up.
Same question.
He beat it to death for you, did he? Yeah, okay.
And I'll go again. I'm sixty one next week. My kids are not going to use this. We're not going to use this. If I ever have grandchildren, maybe they'll end up using this, but I am in support of this because I think we need something to revitalize the town. I've been here since nineteen eighty eight. Living here full time for the past twenty years and all I've seen is a decrease in everything. The skier visits are starting to rebound because of all the efforts that have been made up at the ski area. I'm a ski instructor, have been for thirty seven years. So I have firsthand knowledge of what's going on in the ski area. Town square used to be booming. Town square used to have bands every Saturday and Sunday from June until August. You'd walk into Town Square, it would be crowded. Certainly not during the shoulder seasons of April, May, June. But during the summer, I walked there to get the mail and it's crickets. It's changed. I commend anybody to try to change this. So I don't know if this is going to bring people in, but something's going to change in my opinion.
Thank you. Hand up, please. Got to hear from somebody. Okay, Katie?
Katie Smith, ninety seven Boulder Path, resident. I wrote a couple of points down, but you said one about business. Thank you, Mike. I was also going to say that. I've been here for eleven years and I have also seen change in the businesses and I think that this will help bring more tourism and. We are a tourist of town. That is what we are. And so bringing more tourists brings more business, bringing more business brings better, healthier businesses in town. That makes our businesses want to be open all the time and longer hours and have more vibrant products or. Whatever that is, but more business in town is better than for the resident too, because the restaurants will be open and you have things to do with your family and friends when we invite them up. As a resident, when we invite our friends up. We invite them on Columbus Day weekend. We can invite them on Fourth of July. I don't think anybody probably invited people up on November fifth because there's not much going on, right? So more activity makes it a better town for our guest experience. And then my second big point. Is that from a town perspective, we have a really large tax burden that's looming over us. And undeveloped property is taxed at a very lower rate than developed property. So developing more property will help spread the tax burden of a wastewater treatment plant or whatever other things that are coming down the pipe that we need to. Address for our town as a citizen. Thank you.
And so on the other hand, Charles.
Morning, Charles Hastings, eighteen Hillside Way. I think I've been coming here for forty three years. But I'm both a resident, much less than that. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. The Conservation Commission does not have any prepared statement at this time. So I'll just voice my own comments. And I will say that my opinions on this have have changed, evolved, or someone would say devolved over, over time. I think about it differently now than I did before. I think I spoke at your first public hearing sometime last year and expressed concerns. I will say at this point, I've come to accept that. It seems a good idea to move the adventure center out to its current location. I think that. Is actually a positive thing and I was hesitant at first, but I think that's probably a good idea. I'm fully supportive of measures that seek to. Bring more activity, business, et cetera, into the center of town. And I think this could potentially help. I have some questions about individual components of the adventure center where they will be as successful as we hope, but that's an issue that can be addressed at a later time. My, my, my main concern. Which is perhaps fixable or addressable, I hope, is what I expressed sometime last year. And that is that I still believe and think of Corcoran Pond as. Somehow so symbolic, emblematic of Watergo Valley. And there are multiple points of view from the town square, from the road, looking out on it. It really is part of what makes this place so special. It's somehow symbolic to me of the special. Quality of this town at the end of the road. And I worried all along that stripping out that section of forest and putting in an adventure center would. Would impair that. It would alienate parts of the public against the resort that built it. And I don't like to see those kinds of rips, so I. I'm still very much concerned that if this is to be built, it'd be built in such a way that it somehow does not. Negatively, in a big way negatively impact the view one has looking out over the town. I did study, I've, I've walked through the area many times. I know a lot of the trees fairly well. I know the giant pine in the center, which I talked about earlier, has a funny crook in it. It may or may not survive. I studied when, when this was marked out sometime last, late last summer. With flags showing where the boundaries were, what would be impacted most. I, I couldn't see that it was very positive. I was afraid that much of the major. Tree component of that area was either going to be cut or simply so adversely affected it would not survive. The critical thing is what you see as you look across the pond up into that shoreline. There's a steep embankment. Some of the trees that are right along that embankment are going to get cut according to the, what I saw last year. And some of them will survive, but they will, they'll, I mean, it looks like they'll have most of their root base ripped. I mean, they, they probably will not survive. So I'm concerned that if this is to be built. That it be done in such a way that they try to preserve the visual beauty of that part of the town. I, I like, I've studied the landscaping plan as well as I can. I think they did a good job. I. Respect the fellow people that put that together. If those trees, et cetera, can mature to what they're planned to be and the shrubs, it'll look good. But I am concerned about trying to rescue what there is there, keep it healthy and alive. And, and I'm also worried that, yes, there are big plans to develop much more than just this corner. Of the valley, that there may be huge complexes going on in different areas. But we can only take this one step at a time. And this step is what's going to happen to that corner of the pond. And so I ask the planning board, I ask Tyrell. As you go ahead with this, we're going to preserve that sort of jewel of beauty that we have in Corcoran Pond.
Charles spoke a little longer than he should have, but it was a very good subject. I won't let you know what the, my phone says. All right. Other people, please. You didn't come here just to listen, did you?
They're residents?
Maybe they did. All right, so.
Hello, I'm, I'm online. Is it possible for me to make a comment?
Typically, no.
Oh, I've had my hand up. Okay, I thought it was since the announcement said we could join by Zoom. It didn't say I wouldn't be able to speak. Okay.
No, the, well.
Take it in two minute limit.
I'm going to do it because I don't see any other hands. But the rationale is that, you know, it's specifically, specifically state law and we've observed it ever since. That public hearings are in person. But.
May I suggest it in the future then, that public and, public hearings that get announced by email indicate that because it did not indicate that.
Yep. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Do is give you two minutes. Tell us what's on your mind.
Oh, thank you. First off, that same announcement did say that the. Documentation is available only physically at Town Hall, so I didn't even try to go looking for it. I have a question and then a comment. The question would be. This appears to be to attract only small children. I heard someone else reference kind of, kind of that. And I wonder why, why you would do it and not be something more like what is up at Loon, which attracts adults as well, if you're trying to attract. More tourism other than just young children. That's going to pretty much limit you. So that's the question. The comment is, what I get concerned about all projects like this, whether they're someone building a new park in a town. Or what have you is what's the plan for maintenance? I'll put it this way, since it's a private. Project. Not under the responsibility of the town. What happens with something like this comes under disrepair? You know, it's going to be right out on the main street. If it comes under disrepair, deferred maintenance. It's, it's, it's got to be an eyesore, so I would, I would. Hope that the board would make the applicant give some type of criteria for continued maintenance. Of, of, of the, of the property and of the facilities that are going to be there. That's it. Thank you for the two minutes.
Let us, we, I wanted your attention earlier, but tell us who you are or where you live and.
Surely, my name is Paul Bedaro. We're homeowners at twenty two Lost Pass Road.
Thank you, Paul. Hope next time that you come.
Thank you, I will.
From you again.
Thank you.
Margaret.
Margaret Turner. This is seventeen River Road. I just want to say that from listening. For months now to what people have to say about this project. The elephant in the room is the Sky Track. The Sky Track is tall. And even if you use wonderful colors in it and that kind of thing, it is an ugly presentation as you come into town. And I don't know whether anything can be done about that or not. But I think the developer needs to be aware that a lot of people. While supporting the idea of having more activities in town are very concerned about the appearance of that. Where it is planned to be put.
You have a comment you want to make?
No.
No. Any other hands up?
Your correspondent.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a resident here and an employee of the resort. Am I allowed to speak?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Marissa Preston. I'm the operations manager for Waterville Valley Resort. I'm here just to show my support for this project. We've worked a long time trying to develop the plan for this building, the aesthetics of the park, and I've put a lot of thought into who would be using this venue. This originally started as something smaller. And it became apparent that this would be a wonderful opportunity for the people who live here and for the people who come here to really explore our trail system. Not the ski mountain trail system, but the biking, the Nordic skiing, everything that Waterville has to offer outside of the Alpine world. It's situated in a place that we would be able to do beginner lessons for people who are interested in Nordic. Be able to get bikes right out and onto the trail system, encourage more people to go out there and explore nature. We are surrounded by beautiful forests. It's one of the reasons I moved here from Park City, is how wonderful this valley is. And honestly, I believe this attracts the young families in the valley. I once was a young family that brought my children here. Something for the littles to do, something for the middle schoolers to do. There's a maze and mini golf. Who doesn't love mini golf? And then, you know, we have the indoor cafe. We have the aerial system for those more adventurous adults and teenagers, as well as a tax course. This is hopefully to give some people something else to do, right? And give people a place to come and know and learn about the trail system that's all around this valley. So I wanted to thank everybody here and for everybody who has comments and has put a lot of thought and concern into how this will affect the valley and how it'll look. I assure you, I want the best for this place. I love Waterville Valley, and I want this to be a wonderful representation of the town itself, as well as the resort, a place that we can all come together.
Thank you. Randy.
My name is Jim.
Jim.
For you at the Black Bear Lodge.
There you are, Jim. You may speak.
Thank you.
That's funny.
They look a lot better.
I didn't pay a lot of attention to that, but my apologies, Jim.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jim. I'm general manager of the Black Bear Lodge. I personally support this project. We need help as far as the lodging is concerned. Many people complain about the lack of or blight in the lodges. Additional people coming into the area will help us rebound, rebuild our products. A rising tide floats all boats. This is not about summer. This is not about fall. This is about year-round. What they're trying to build there goes beyond just the simple fabric of summer. With everything that's going to go over there, it's going to re-center everything for cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, bikes. And it's going to have a central hub that's going to be brand-new. They may not like the designs of things, but those things happen. Those things can probably be adjusted. As far as people thinking they're not going to take care of their toys, I beg to differ. If they put something new in there, they're going to take care of it. The reason for it is because you're going to get more people here, and they certainly want to do a decent presentation. So I think it's important that we support this. We really need something. In the past, I've heard people say, oh, Loon, I live up there. Not going to happen. Never happen. This is an independent property. This is an independent owners. This is a small ski area compared to the level of Loon. Loon is owned by, Loon is a part of twelve resort conglomerate. This is homespun. I think this will be a unique opportunity, and again, I fully support this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Any other hands up, please? If you read one of these.
So these are emails that have come through from our town residents. We know, so from Missy, she's a town resident, Missy Mandarola.
I don't know.
She's a town resident? Okay. My husband, oh, here we go. Okay, so, hi Steve. Well, this is addressed to Steve Royer. Hi Steve, my husband and I own a condo in village condos here Waterville Valley. And as nineties kids, we really believe in bringing more vitality and energy to the resort. We want to help attract more guests, not just so they can spend money, but because we are deeply, we care deeply about keeping our town and resort thriving. I truly think that if we build more local activities, people will be more likely to stay in Waterville instead of traveling to nearby places like Lincoln. This is especially important for the international ski groups I work with from the UK. They prefer to have fun around here. They don't want to pay for a bus to go elsewhere. For them, everything being local is a huge plus. I hope this perspective is helpful. I'm happy for my comments to be read aloud at the hearing. Kind regards, Missy.
Thank you, Missy. And I have another one here from Tara Stewart, founder, Alpine Advent. She says you don't get, often get emailed from us. We learned why this is important. Dear Planning Board members, I am writing to express my support for initiatives that bring visitors and economic activity to Waterville Valley. As a year-round resident and founder of Alpine Advent, I believe the project will enhance our community's appeal as a destination benefit, will benefit all local businesses and residents. I regret that I cannot attend today's hearing, and I would appreciate if this letter could be read into the record. Thank you, Tara Stewart. I'm going to hand this one to you.
So this is addressed to the, to the planning board, Greg and Tammy Gagnon. Dear Planning Board, we ask that our email be read during the public hearing in support of the proposed Adventure Center. We are writing to express our strong support for the proposed Adventure Center in Waterville Valley. This project represents an exciting opportunity to strengthen our community and ensure the long-term economic health of our town. We need to think of both winter and summer visits to sustain our local economy. An adventure center will provide a variety of activities that appeal across seasons and age groups, making Waterville Valley a destination not only for skiers, but for families, outdoor enthusiasts, and visitors seeking unique experiences throughout the year. We feel it is important to offer engaging activities within the town square for all age groups to enjoy together. By encouraging visitors to spend more time in town, we create opportunities for town square businesses to thrive and for guests to have greater, have a greater experience in Waterville Valley. A new adventure center with Nordic skiing, snowshoeing, and fat tire bike center will be a welcome hub for families and guests of all ages during the winter season, providing a place together that town square lacks currently. The ropes course, mini golf, and maze provide summer activities all family members can enjoy. Moving the Adventure Center will also open space for new retail business opportunities in town square. It broadens our recreational options for all age groups beyond Alpine skiing, making Waterville Valley more inclusive and attractive to a wider group of visitors. There are several expensive projects on the horizon. It is critical that we expand our tax base. By supporting the Adventure Center, we create a sustainable way to generate additional revenue, helping to offset costs while enhancing our community. Some may worry that adding outdoor activities in the town square could change the nature of Waterville Valley. However, a few thoughtfully designed amenities will not turn Waterville Valley into Lincoln. Instead, we feel they will complement our existing charm and reinforce our identity as a family-friendly, recreation-focused destination. In short, the Adventure Center is not just a recreational facility. It is an investment in the future of Waterville Valley. By offering a new building and outdoor space, we will enrich our town's appeal, support local businesses, and strengthen our economic foundation. We urge you to move forward with this project and help ensure that Waterville Valley continues to thrive as a vibrant, welcoming community for residents and visitors alike. Greg and Tammy Gagnon.
Again, your fan club is here. Now, engineer, do you have any comments?
Sorry, for the record, I'm Paul Chisholm with Keach Northridge Associates, where the engineers and surveyors work for the project. I believe the attorney for the selectmen had mentioned that there's four easements listed in the document, yet only one shows up by meets and bounds. There's an easy explanation for this. I'm happy to chat offline, by the way, just add clarity to the situation. But basically, there's a couple easements that are in there that are listed by rights, but there's no specific areas by meets and bounds actually described in that document, nor is there a record plan showing them in any way. So we've put on all the things that actually historically have been mapped out. And then the other rights are retained through the document. They're just not something we can legally put on the plans there. So again, happy to work with the town's attorney to kind of sort that out, make sure that there's clarity there and an understanding of all that. But just wanted to point that out. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. I see you there, James. You have any comments to make?
Nope, I was gonna, the only comment I was gonna make is the same as what Paul just indicated about the easements.
Good enough. Are there any other people here would like to comment during this public hearing? Please speak up or. Okay, then the planning board will read, Liz.
Yes.
Liz, by the way, is our consultant, a professional planner.
So I just wanted to make the note that Nick has not completed the peer review and party study yet. And I know that the planning board had spoken before at the last public hearing that if it wasn't completed in time, that the idea would be to table it until a further date. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that.
Okay, I didn't put any time restriction on him. No, we have to have this done because there is a time restriction, which is January seventeen. Nevertheless, no, I'm not asking him to say that you got to do it by this date, but I want him to do is be thorough.
Mr. Chairman, he agreed to it December fifteenth, which is a way of.
Yes, originally, and then I tried to get him to get it done by Friday. Yes, we are, we're all over the place right now.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, but so that the public knows there is a peer review underway, and the peer review will be public, and it will be discussed and analyzed by the planning board. That will be public. Everybody will know what's happening before we reach the deadline or before we make a decision. Any comments, counselor? Fine, then I will suspend this portion of the public hearing. That is, it's deferred now until December first at six P M. When those who were not able to be here today could be present and provide their public comment.
And will that just be more public comment? No decisions? No.
Yes, there would be no deliberation and no decisions. We want to know what the public thinks, because it moves from, it's a moving target.
So you do need a motion and a vote?
To.
To continue.
To continue.
I move that we continue the public hearing December first at six P M.
Second.
Here, here at Town Hall.
Here at Town Hall, or we may, depending on how many people say they want to come to that public hearing. But so far, it appears that this room is sufficient. So I will say, time, six P M, place, this room, date, December first, for additional public hearing. So we need a vote, all in favor? One, two. Hi. So now the meeting has been postponed, or is that the proper word?
Hearing has been continued.
Continued. Hearing has been continued until December first. So now the board may continue to talk about its amendments to ordinances and other problems that the planning board has. Thank you all for coming.
Before you go, I just want to add your question.
I would like to. Laura? That's our problem for all of us.
Well, yeah, so there was one person. He did say he's calling Conservation Commission. That's perfectly. It may not be me, I may sense.
What are we going to do about this? If they had to pass the buck after Conservation, easement's business for trails? I don't know what we're supposed to do in Conservation.
Taking a time?
Sure.